Uh, roll call, we have everybody here except Deb and I believe she's coming. Uh, additions to the agenda, we have, uh, two numbers, five and six on the personnel. That's it?
Yep.
Without additions, that entertain a motion to adopt the agenda.
So.
From Bob.
Second.
And second by Dave. We defer the discussion. Hearing now all those in favor, second by the same, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Hold the same sign. Motion carries. Number five, approve and recommend us from the April tenth, two thousand twelve regular meeting.
I think that there's a title on the time we reconvene to nine oh three instead of nine twenty-three.
Okay. Can you make that change? Anything else?
And then agree to add a minute with the review of the gathering.
Um, certainly, but should we add meetings after or in?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, we can do that. I recommend that we do that. So. MR and Jacob.
So you want those added to the minutes, not to today's, or not to the minutes of today's meeting when you discuss that piece? Is that right?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yep.
Well, if you stay on that, I can rewrite the minutes. When you're gonna, when you move into this part here, you'll change what about the time if we change the shot? Yeah, that's the timing.
So then do you adjourn the meeting at nine twenty-three or nine oh two?
Is that twenty-three, please?
Okay, so you re-convene at nine oh two?
Yep.
After the closed session?
The closed session was re-convened and we closed the session nine twenty-three. Are we sure of the closed session at nine twenty-three?
Okay, so at eight fifty-four, you moved to closed session or you didn't? I'm trying to figure out if we reconvene in closed session or was it reconvene back to open session to adjourn?
To nine oh two with a meeting.
I see. So you reconvene as part of the open meeting?
Yeah, well, that's why. Yeah, so they just committed to do that.
Okay. So probably.
I missed that.
Yep.
So.
We're.
Okay.
I think.
Okay, no, that's okay. And you still want me to add Cameron and Jacob then to definitely fund you? What's that? Thank you.
I don't know.
I know we're in the minutes.
So you'll.
Pretend we need some.
Just have a second to the last line.
Yeah.
Alright, so I didn't hear a motion to approve that change. Second. And for the discussion. Hearing now all those in favor, second by the same, aye?
Aye.
Hold the same sign. Motion carries. Onto the financial reports. Uh, first, two thousand twelve Treasury report, first. We have.
We have something new on, usually it's just the Treasury report in months or down. Do you want me to forward me that Deborah Allen issued our audit that should be a final audit provided eight ninety-one? Should hear, do you want to really highlight it in your package? Uh, maybe that more, more on that, Alan, Dale, can you come over to the auditorium? Numbers hasn't changed while we're closing up, which we talked about. We just de-approve motion. Or approval on that, so when they undo the audit, actually we're back at the forum. Just no more side of that part. Then if you look at the PMA sheet there, uh, second page, uh, on after that vocational, it's Carl Perkins' expense that we reversed. Uh, you know, special instruction, we get three red areas there, we have assault, we have tuition reimbursement included in there. And also some capital expenditures that we'd be to reimbursement. Uh, Donovan's, uh, personal support services were forty-nine dollars, uh, we'll get that, we got the end of the year, so they're going to have a balance. And another third page there, we got the ninety-three thousand there, but that's the working time that that year, Jones versus Allen, we'll get that. Those are the only things that unusual.
Second by Dave.
We need a second motion for the file audited report, is that what you're saying?
Yeah, we need a second motion for that.
I'll make a motion to approve the, uh, file audited report provided August ninth, two thousand eleven.
Okay, motion by Dave. Second. Second by Mark. We defer the discussion. Hearing now all those in favor, second by the same, aye?
Aye.
Hold the same sign. Motion carries. So then we'll get the Treasury report to the balance sheets for March as well. That's what Todd really says, Tom, it's a.
Yeah.
We defer the discussion.
I'd make a motion to approve the, uh, March two thousand twelve Treasury report, the balance sheet.
Okay, motion by Dave. Second. And second by Bob. We defer the discussion. Hearing now all those in favor, second by the same, aye?
Aye.
Hold the same sign. Motion carries. Number seven, audit and approval of the bills. We have April two thousand twelve, additional March two thousand twelve bills.
I had the opportunity to go into the district office this afternoon to review the bills. Um, and I did not know we could add one for additional March to make up bills, so I recommend approving both of those.
Yep. Motion by Mark, approve notice, second by Lou. We defer the discussion. Hearing now all those in favor, second by the same, aye?
Aye.
Hold the same sign. Motion carries. We have more items on the consent agenda this evening, so we're going to have to go along with the business response. Bruce, the public comments, uh, at our last meeting, I think they addressed it a little bit to them. Uh, particularly in regard to elders associating materials that will be presented in, uh, uh, conjunction with referendum in taxes and different tax categories. And we're working with elders on getting that information, so I think anybody who wants specific information on how the levy will affect their own property is going to be available. And then you had also commented on, uh, the PMA software and now that we have, uh, approves of contracts and we have, uh, identified our. There's more information now than there were, but I guess the response is that I think PMA is an ongoing, um, tool that we use, we use it all the time. Uh, so I think Todd is putting.
We'll get that revised numbers and that issue with revision, we'll put that in the PMA software as well as next year's budget.
I, can I say something? Um, it's not that you don't have it in the software, it needs to get out to the public. We have a referendum that seems to be pretty important and that was probably the most, even though it was forecasted, um, the most vivid, um, um, uh, presentation of what was happening. And my thought would be as if it's correct now and it looks like we have some of these contracts settled, it might not be the worst thing to get it out to the public. Public just wants to know, where are you spending this money? Why are we in such for so much trouble? And it shouldn't be a secret to us. And that presentation you gave the first time when we came to the public meeting, it had all laid up with a lot of data. I don't know why we don't just make that available. Maybe it's in the superintendent's office.
From the, the, the tax, uh, information from the county yet, so that will be coming for.
Bruce, what do you say, make it available to the public? You say maybe have another meeting, bringing them out again with that updated to get that out, or by what means or mechanism?
I'm, I'm, I'm in the public meeting, if you don't want a public meeting, it's just that the taxpayers in this district have to vote on a referendum. I think all of you know how important that could be, uh, for the district. We have to show them that we really need this and what it is and there's, we've had some stuff going on, but there's nobody there, right? And so, um, I would think that maybe get together a calling system and pack the place, if that's what you have to do. But somehow or other make it available. And because there's people that are, won't come in, could they stop into the superintendent's office and just pick it up? And, um, or if you want to, drop it off at the copy shops in the morning. If you guys hit the copy shops between eighteen, uh, seven, eight o'clock, you probably gonna get ninety percent of the conversation going on out there. But I thought it was a pretty interesting presentation and, um, even though forecasts aren't quite so accurate, at least it was the best you could do with the data that you have. I, I just wanted to keep it a secret, so we entered in the system and then we're sitting there after the, um, referendum potentially dies, maybe we should have got it all.
Yeah, we're using it as a tool to help show the public that there's this need.
Right.
It's a good tool, so.
And I'm just trying to think, what's the best means or mechanism to get, you know, that out to the masses? Um, you know, like you said, you can have available copies and then make, you know, put something in the paper, put something on the website.
Yeah, there you go.
Pick up a copy.
There you go.
Et cetera, et cetera, but just trying to think the most effective, efficient way to get it out.
I try every way.
Yeah, I mean, it's just.
I mean, yeah, a lot of people that are paying taxes here, that kids are in the district, they don't work here, they may not be back till five thirty in the afternoon. For most stuff, they're trying to get the household in order. They're not necessarily going to have a chance to get there, but if you give them lots of opportunity. My only thing is the time is going to take. And that's going to come. I can snap your fingers, it's going to be something November.
It is, but I think like to Todd's point too, a lot of the county information isn't available yet. I think there, as soon as it is, I think they're going to update that and then I think we had touched on before, have it available if someone has a specific or unique case to them, they just want to know exactly, how's that going to affect me? I think there's a direct contact over directly or whatever and then she can go, your property ID number is this, here's how you individually is going to be impacted.
Yeah, and Todd, you're.
And, uh, and, uh, EBA out here.
Yeah.
And do a presentation and run a website for the people.
It might not be a bad idea to throw that out again and try to, I think so, hit more people here, because I think more people will come and, and, and see that again, forecast and forecast, they're only as good as a certain period of time. But, you know, more people actually get that information in their hands, the better.
Well, and then to, to be into that, I think we've as a board has already, um, committed to starting to look at what is the best process of how we're going to get to the people. I think we are looking at, uh, the latter part of April for some major act and start forming groups and try to really get it and try to develop a program on how we're going to be selling it. How we're going to be bringing it all to the people, if it's going to, uh, every household. I don't know what this solution is, but I think there has been some other people in the community that have stepped up and had said that they were going to help with that process. And I think if we as a board actually go all too and start asking different people to come in and, and sit down and, and start formalizing a, a broad scope of what we're, what we want to campaign for. I think that's what we need to start looking at now, because I think some of the things that we were going through is with other issues that were going on with the, the, the other things that we're doing, uh, took us a lot of our time. I think now we need to, since that is all completed, I think now we need to start focusing on the referendum.
We have a list of about seventeen nominees that signed up when we did our survey to start with.
So, but we need to start formalizing on that.
Well, I know they've tried to.
Maybe the seventy need this, maybe the seventy need that presentation I'm talking about. That's all I'm saying. They're going to go out, they're going to talk to people. It's certainly a lot different people. You got something you can present to us.
And I know they've tried to, you know, a couple of times, they've tried to get people together, so keep the quality of the community energized, re-engage that group, and they've had difficulty with where people show up.
Oh, we have to start talking about how we're going to do that, because I think that's a great, a huge challenge the board needs to really be in, in, in grasp with and, and, and start pushing it now, since we're, you know, some of the things are settled down, I think, for the next part. And we need to start focusing on the referendum, because we got like eight months or nine months, six months before the.
I, if I can add one more thing, I, I'm a little bit concerned that you hired a superintendent in July first and everybody lays back and expects him to make it all happen in four months' time. And I would hate to have him here for the next six or seven years or five years and have his whole, um, administration or his, be based upon that. I'm sorry, I take that pressure on.
I don't think that's anything close to even.
And it's not going to, regardless of who it is, it's not fair for that person to put that.
That's exactly what I'm saying. I think we need to. So we need, maybe get behind it as, as a group to make sure that doesn't, I don't know that you can actually pull that together in four months' time. I, I would think that's nearly an impossibility, but.
Yeah, that, that person is going to spend at least a year learning and developing trust and within the community and so on, and it would not be fair to put that person out on the road.
We have that conversation here, but there's places in the community that have different conversations. We somehow have to offset that and, you know.
I just think we need to get started and then be able to put a lot of it to rest. The candidate I'm going to bring up later tonight, I think that candidate is going to want to be a part of it.
And that's their choice.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But he's fifteen now.
Yes.
But you understand, I think you've got what our feelings are.
He's just saying, you know, understand.
Yeah, and I think we are, I mean, I think we will, I mean.
Okay. Number two, Board Chair, we have a brief summary of closed session of the April tenth board meeting. Uh, we entered into closed session on Minnesota Statute thirteen D point oh five, so division three A, to evaluate staff for tenure of building principals. Principals shared their evaluation thoughts on Tammy Vaughn-Hur and Jacob Lyer. Number three, review and approve crisis men by policy eight oh six.
That was a good, uh, lead and, uh, hat that are on for a meeting. Um, we did have the fire marshal up here and he did, uh, did go through this with Donnie. Uh, there were a couple changes that he, uh, recommended, um, on page, page one, um, he wanted the, uh, the administration listed the lane in their cell phones and, uh, office phones. So that was added and then on page three, also added, uh, oh, we got the nine one one on there, but the police department and the fire chief, one of those dangerous numbers on, uh, in our crisis plan. Those were the only changes, uh, that he recommended and he thought it was a good plan and we're going to go with that.
Speaking of motion, yes, motion by Deb. Second. We defer the discussion. Hearing now all those in favor, second by the same, aye?
Aye.
Hold the same sign. Motion carries. On the personnel, review and consider approval of resignation from Cherry Unsland, the central master's coach, by effect immediately.
Cherry, uh, received John's motion and unfortunately, that's seen the motion without Albert County's coach, so, uh, she has visited with all of these juniors already and informed them. She was good coach for her missus. We talk on the bill.
On the recommendation to approve her resignation.
Okay, motion from Dave. Second by Gretchen. We defer the discussion. Hearing now all those in favor, second by the same, aye?
Aye.
Hold the same sign. Motion carries. Number two, review and consider approval of resumption of placing Cora Holmstam, unrequested leave of absence effective at the end of the two thousand twelve school year.
Exhibit me your packet, but this is the second step through the process. Have you noticed the next move is further back?
We point to Gretchen. Second by Mark. We defer the discussion. Hearing now all those.
We need her all to.
Oh.
Bob?
Aye.
Dave?
Aye.
Mark?
Aye.
Dan?
Aye.
Dave Johnson?
Aye.
Gretchen?
Aye.
Motion carries. Number three, review and consider approval of hiring Cora Holmstam, business education teacher, point eight nine, full-time equivalent for the two thousand twelve thirteen school year.
This is part of budget reduction due to financial limitations and all of those classes.
So.
Motion by Bob.
Second.
Second by Dave. We defer the discussion. Hearing now all those in favor, second by the same, aye?
Aye.
Hold the same sign. Motion carries. Number four, review and consider approval of termination of Arlene Wally, paralegal professional at the end of the two thousand eleven twelve school year due to financial restrictions and enrollment.
We had two paralegal questions that, uh, we were only in connection, but one didn't resign, and this is the second one.
So. Motion by Dave. Second, second by Deb. Where does she work?
Elementary.
Elementary?
Yeah, she was hired in January, February, something like that.
Anything else? Hearing now all those in favor, second by the same, aye?
Aye.
Hold the same sign. Motion carries. Number five, review and consider approval of attending image yoga child care by one week.
Received a letter on Monday, uh, he was towards the head of child care, we prefer to write it, but, uh, we're looking for one more week, I recommend approval.
So.
Motion by Lou.
Second.
And second by Gretchen. We defer the discussion. Hearing now all those in favor, second by the same, aye?
Aye.
Hold the same sign. Motion carries. And number six, review and consider approval of hiring Robert Hewitt, superintendent effective July first, two thousand twelve, with the understanding that he will acquire district superintendent licensure no later than October first, two thousand twelve. And Bob's going to comment on this.
Last meeting, I reported on the entire process we've gone through to reach this point of research. The board and board search committee was adamant from the beginning, this process would be transparent and extensive. Lots of work and time has gone into this process. I want to publicly thank Greg Vandell, the staff and community teams for all their time and work. Last Wednesday was a long and interesting day, but I think that all the teams left the interview meeting tired of feeling the process was fair. I can't guarantee this candidate can walk on water, but I can defend the process used to arrive at this point in the procedures we use. In my opinion, this process should be a template or a model for all future administrative hires for District seven forty-one. Input was received and appreciated from community and staff teams. The entire board was involved in the interview process and ultimately, the decision rests with the entire board. The administrative negotiating team, consisting of Dave Johnson, Deborah Glens and myself, met yesterday with the candidate and worked on, worked out contract language and compensation commensurate with other similar size area districts. The candidate is currently in the process of getting his superintendent license and the contract language reflects that stipulation. And, uh, the date of October first is used because sometimes the Department of Education is a little slow in getting this stuff out, and that's why it's there. So, Mr. Chair, I would make that motion that we hire Robert Hewitt as superintendent of seven forty-one.
Motion by Bob.
You have, you have.
Yeah, second by Deb. Uh, just to further, a little more discussion on, on the process, the, he doesn't have his license and, and we need to apply to the board of school administrators, ultimately be approved by the Department of Education. And we've written a contingency in the contract, so in the, there, there's, it sounds like virtually no rest of this on average, and this is going to happen, we gave him.
By July?
By July. Uh, we need the variance, because school districts cannot operate without superintendent, so we need to go through that process and it sounds from Greg Vandell and others that it's not going to be an issue. So that is in the process that we're beginning, uh, to apply for that variance. We have instructions on how to do that, and that's underway, so we're going to stay on top of that. I think the, Bob had commented on the, on the contract terms, and I think it's a public contract and, and, um, he's being paid, as you all know, a hundred and ten thousand dollars the first year, a hundred and eleven dollars the second year. And he's got insurance and four oh three B standardization and, uh, everything else, which is measured with whatever they, we checked the districts around us and, and sort of he, you know, compared on that. We have a motion, second by the, we defer the discussion. So hearing now more all those in favor, uh, hiring Mr. Hewitt. Say aye?
Aye.
Hold the same sign. Motion carries. Okay, uh, Deb, more information, we're reporting, is this a report?
Anything else going on? It's been a while. It was on April thirteenth. We had, again, two speakers, which again, I think it was in this last meeting, kind of unusual, but, um, the first one spoke to, uh, was named Sam Kramer. He was a, I'm not sure exactly what his title is. He's a policy specialist in federal programs at the Minnesota Department of Education. And he came there to outline and, um, so we could have a better understanding of the No Child Left Behind waiver, and I have some information to drop off with Bob on that. He literally had a really good, um, PowerPoint demonstra, or presentation that showed the difference, what's missed, what's changed, what really hasn't changed. It didn't just go away. There is, it's Minnesota's way of tweaking it. What I found interesting was that the parts that we normally hear in the media that are just not there anymore, they're still there, they're just aren't going to need teeth anymore. The teeth were, if you didn't do thus and so, you didn't get funding, that part's still gone. You still have AYP, you still have all that stuff. There's just no teeth in it anymore. And that was quite an interesting, um, presentation, and I believe that PowerPoint is on the C organization website. Um, you can go to this C organization website and they have, usually have handouts and any information that we had at the meeting, you can pick them up online, and that one is definitely a good read. Um, right before the, he started out the meeting and then, um, broke for the business part. And right before the C meeting, the, um, executive board met and, um, I'm also part of that, and discussed, um, where we stand with our budget and stuff like that. And the big thing was they're discussing, um, working through, whenever they do any raises or talk about changing the fee scale at all, they do it usually in two to three years. So that everybody's comfortable, make sure that it's necessary. They really do a good job of, um, being very, they do a very good job of handling their money. And they're very much aware of everybody's in the same boat, we're not getting any more money from anywhere, but they just want to keep the place, um, afloat. So that was one thing that was brought up at the business part of the meeting, um, that and the fact that, um, the Galloway Works, Deb Griffin, will be out for a while for having some surgery done. And Brad Lindell, the chairman, kind of took over. And he now appreciates even more how hard she works and, uh, some others. Um, the second speaker was, um, Lee Grab. She is a third-year, uh, college student with William Mitchell College of Law. And she was discussing, um, different litigation cases, the most recent of the last two litigation cases against the, their particular state for not funding education clearly. Again, that information is also on the C, I would definitely look at that one. It was, I do have some handouts that I can leave in the district office too. And, um, I guess that's about packed a lot into it. I do also have a, uh, and, uh, for the, um, proposed membership rate adjustment. I think it ended up to be one, one cent per pupil. That they, their, their fee is set on it per pupil unit, and I think it's one cent. What happened is, um, they hadn't raised rates for like ten or twelve years and then they raised it a lot and everybody got all shaky and lots of people are like, oh, I don't know if we can stay in there or not. So they want to do something minimal in increments so they don't have to. I'll let you know if they decide. And that's it.
And we're, yeah.
We also met, um, April, April twelfth, later that day. Busy day. This one was here in school though. Um, we went over our old business was, uh, we're bringing Max, is going to, Max Mar is, uh, funding, just, oh, I shouldn't say he funding. Group finally figured out to get him there on, in May to discuss, um, funding for coaches, for staff development. That's for their, um, head coaches training and stuff. Um, then they discussed the Leah banquet for the distinguished services support, um, supportive education. The Leah banquet is, we've been doing for years. The first one was for, um, professional staff, teachers, certified staff. And then they did one for students, students of excellence. Now they offer one for distinguished service support staff. And the staff development group, um, after much discussion, decided that even though they are not going to have as much money, that if it came to it there, we could do some creative fundraising on our own, that this was a really good thing to do, to have at least. What they do is they pick two and then their, um, significant others or their students or parents. They pay for them for the dinner. There's a, it's a, it's a nice night out, nice meal, nice little plaque or timed, little bit of bread recognition and a good way for schools to show off what good people they have, not only going to their schools, but working at their schools and that kind of stuff. And they talked about what that, then there was some talk about the, uh, feedback from the April night in-service. They never run out of things to do. Staff was happy, they had time in their classroom and they had time to do some of the stuff they haven't had time to do otherwise. Uh, new business, discussed a little bit on the dating, um, dating, dating process, there we go. Proposed two thousand and twelve, two thousand and thirteen budget, what, um, and then they, they always have to make sure that those details have worked out. And then they had the, uh, district-wide technology survey. There's something called the survey, survey monkey that I believe Joan either put it together or maybe Colin, but, uh, I think it's amazing what they can do online now. They put these surveys together, you click on the line, you answer it all up and it tallies all that stuff up. And then, so when they do have a data, they know exactly what they need, what everybody wants and they. Staff development is probably the one area that I can say since I've been on the school board has become the most streamlined and effective and it gets right to the point now. I think it has become more focused over the, these same years than any other area that I can. Then we also, the ever-popular fill the vacancies. As you might guess, staff development is not a hot ticket item to get people involved in, but they twist arms and promise cookies and treats and we got them all filled back up and our next meeting is May tenth in college.
Uh, food services, sorry, negotiations. Um, I think we're going for a tentative agreement with our, uh, dispensaries and, and food service, which is really good. Very minimal increases, um, on all staff. You know, I just want to commend the entire staff because, you know, everyone's that are, have to, um, okay it and live with the decisions of, of the groups and stuff like that. And, you know, we're just, board members trying to make sure that we have money available for the kids' education. So it wasn't for the, I think, the staff to realize the, the sensitivity of the budgets and stuff like that. So I, my hands are out to them for the most part. Uh, if you have superintendents who are familiar with the skip, we obviously have it taken care of. Edmund, you've worked up.
Edmund, we've worked, uh, we've been, uh, this morning, went through the board agenda, we've been kind of having fundraising, fundraising with your websites. Reminded them once again on our dot com too. Discuss summer school preparation and planning, also summer painting. High observation for building principles that will take place this summer. Enrollment in your packet, uh, we have enrollment form, enrollment report, we're down three. We've got a seventh grader who put ourselves in a, and a twelfth grader who dropped in fifteen days. We also have, uh, in your packets, invite for the, uh, spring banquet which is May twentieth. And one of the high school cafeteria, also an invite for the seniors honor banquet, which is also on May twentieth, six o'clock at Ron Judy's. Upcoming dates, uh, this Saturday is Booster Club hog roast at Ron Judy's at six o'clock. Tuesday, Monday, the thirtieth is mid-quarter. Wednesday, May second, there's an athletic community meeting, three fifteen in the high school conference room for Dave and Lou. Monday, May third, district-wide technology meeting, seven thirty in the high school conference room, Dave Kearns. Friday, May fourth, this Tampa Spring banquet, six o'clock at Roadside. Saturday, the fifth is prom, our next board meeting, uh, is May eighth, two o'clock. That's one where we have our, uh, our student council kids coming in. I've also invited, yes, the alumni Booster Club and U zone, coming in at three thirty four. Going on their programs and there's also continuing at three fifteen. That's all I've got. Oh, on the eight, eight, so I'm on that.
Bob, you can still be here, right, on May? Yeah.
Okay, staff, uh, anybody else? Yeah, just a quick minute, Mr. Chair. Last, uh, meeting, the board was handed these and Linda just let you know that I do glance at this stuff once in a while. Uh, real, took a real quick glance. It's called Education for Indoctrination, the Treatment of Islam in sixth through twelfth grade American textbooks. And it's done by the, uh, ACT for AmericanEducation.org. I know nothing about them and I'm going to hand this off to Jeff in a minute. They went through thirty-eight different sixth through twelfth grade textbooks that are commonly used throughout the country. And, uh, a couple of quick quotes caught my eye and first of all, I'm all about diversity. Sharia law requires Muslim leaders to extend religious, religious tolerance to Christians and Jews. That's out of Buddha Mipha, world history, patterns of, uh, interaction. Another one is Islam, respect to Jews and Christians under Islam, Jews and Christians were allowed to practice their own faiths and stuff. So I know nothing about this, I don't know if the rest of you read this, I skimmed it. And I'm going to hand it to somebody that'll end up buying textbooks. Please take a close look at the textbooks you buy. Anything else?